I conducted my own study. Using our actual job title as senior building maintenance workers and can using the same cities and counties. That K and A used, I found that all cities and counties. Have a senior building maintenance worker position or one that is comparable to that. All these cities not only have a higher pay than us. But have other. Have other. Alright, they they make more than we do currently. With this study that I presented to you guys several weeks ago, it showed that. We are fourteen percent below average compared to the other cities and counties studied and eighteen percent below pay. For median between these other cities and counties. So as senior building maintenance workers, we are asking that you guys consider this and make the necessary adjustments to the K and A. Study to show that we are currently not compared to the right titles. Thank you. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure, supervisor.
Um, so I heard you write and thanks for coming up. Um, you're saying that the K and A study had um. The comparables that were presented for your job title. That um, three comparable counties were left out.
Correct.
And out of those three comparable counties, the um, when you went, you reached searched them, they all paid higher.
Correct.
So then that would lower your medium. Pay, right? That was.
Correct, so after reevaluating all the cities and counties to the senior building maintenance positions that they have. I ran a standard average, which showed us fourteen percent below and a median of eighteen percent below that the standard.
Okay, if that's true, that's kind of concerning, but I'm gonna ask.
Can I respond?
Is that, is that true?
So when the position was reevaluated by Coffin Associates, the positions were flexibly allocated from a senior building maintenance worker. To a, I'm sorry, a building maintenance worker to a senior building maintenance worker. What the Coffin Associates realized or what they saw when they looked at all the seniors is that they're all doing the same body of work as a journey level position. No one was identified as being a lead worker, they were all carrying the same classification. So the recommendation was for as a one-two classification. So what was recommended was a two. What they requested at the table was to only um, keep retain the title of a senior building maintenance worker, which was um, accommodated. We just left it as a senior building maintenance worker, but the study was reviewed at the two level, not at the senior level.
So it kind of sounds like the reverse of what. We're hearing the employees don't want to keep their titles the same. As not cause confusion, it sounds like K and A. They were confused with the title, therefore they left out three comparable counties that pay higher.
No, they weren't confused by the title. When they looked at the job, the body of work between the building maintenance worker and the senior building maintenance worker. It's a flexibly allocated position. Typically, what you normally see on a flexibly allocated position is that a senior position is a standalone position. So they were recommending a one-two classification because everybody was working at the same journey level. Nobody's acting a lead in the role because everybody was at the same classification level.
Okay, I mean, it's been a long day and it's late, so let me just ask you simply this. You're the HR director, we only know what we don't know, and then we hear something like this. Do you feel that these workers, that um, their comparables and the way they were looked at to get a medium. Hey, right, for the salary? Do you feel that that was fair? Not forget all the how K and A looked at in the titles and everything. I'm just asking you as the HR director, just point blank. If you think that their comparables were fair or you need to get another set of eyes on that.
Um, I do believe it was fair, and again, we've negotiated with the union, they've ratified on this. I do want to point out again that if the but if the union would have been amenable to the one-two classification. That would have let them open for some more succession planning that supervisor Nevs was mentioning earlier. That they could have came back and requested a senior to have that lead worker classification.
Now, that's in a perfect world, how many people are in the union? Just off the top of your head.
In the union, I think there's like members of fifty-six or fifty, under sixty, I think.
And then your group is about ten?
Yeah, there's eight of us.
There's eighty. Alright, well, that's, I mean, that's a small group inside that. That union, so I don't know if, again, we're not at that table when you and Shay are uh, at the negotiation table with the unions. Was this, was this brought up?
No, it was not brought up by the um, association regarding the salaries that were, they did not have concerns and I have Michael online, Michael, do you have?
Okay, we could, we could get to that, but that's, that's the point that I'm saying is what I said earlier in the morning session is that. I feel that certain workers in this agreement were overlooked. And that everyone just wants to hurry up and get to the pay raise and to move forward and I hate being put in a tight deadline. When um, you know, we've had so much time to to even get here today, I don't like being rushed because it's the end of the pay period. We need to hurry up and make a decision, that's not fair to the board in in any case. But so just again, clearly, you don't feel that the three counties that they feel should have been compared. Which they all paid higher, therefore would raise their expectation of what. Uh, competitive or median salary should be. Um, for this Kings County division, you don't, you you feel that everything was good and?
If we were looking at a one-classification and then looking at a senior level classification that was doing the lead work, that is. Basically what would be compared to the other agencies, that's not what Coff, um, they analyzed, they looked at the two level, which is what they were recommending. So we didn't back out and redo any um, reevaluation once somebody said.
But do you think that that was right?
Um, it honestly, I I still feel like they're road maintenance worker twos, but we were being amenable to the title change and keeping the senior level. And that is what was requested by the association.
Okay, I'm good right now, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Madam.
Uh, the next speaker is Ariel Munoz. I don't believe that they will be speaking, I understand that they're only going to take questions from the board. Does Robert Angel want to speak?
Can I ask also if there's anything that Jay wants to add to as well?
Sure. Jay, I see you online, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me okay?
Are there some comments you'd like to add?
We can't hear you, Jay.
You you can't hear me?
The audio's, audio's off.
It might be on our end, so try it again.
How about now, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now, thanks.
Uh, good, good afternoon, everyone, I just wanted to clarify. That um, under state law, an employer is obligated to meet and confer with the union. We cannot interfere with how the unit, union inner represents its own members. That is not our jurisdiction and in fact, the union could file an unfair labor practice charge against an employer. For trying to meddle with how they represent their own members. When we meet in negotiations, we're doing it on behalf of all of the represented groups. Um, and so we did reach an agreement with the union. We cannot meet individually with employees and negotiate directly with them, that would be circumventing. The union, it's also called direct dealing. So uh, the county did meet its meet and confer obligation. We reached an agreement with the union, the union then voted on it. And the employees in the union ratified that agreement. So this resolution in front of the board is to fulfill that agreement which we've reached and has been ratified. Um, and uh, all of the terms that that we negotiated have been approved by the union. So I just want to make that clear that we have fulfilled our legal obligation and if we tried. To meet individually with each employee to see about their specific concerns. Uh, the union would would probably see that as interference and an unfair labor practice.
I'm Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jay, Supervisor Bella.
Yeah, just for clarification, no one's meeting um, with one-on-one with employees. We're having employees come to the podium at the Board of Supervisors, which you know that. That has been taking place for every agreement you've negotiated. Um, since January, all year, we've had this with firefighters, prosecutors, just all down the line, so this is nothing different. And if uh, an employee comes to the podium. Um, just speaking for myself, I'm going to recognize what they're saying, I'm gonna, and I'm probably going to ask some questions. But what you're telling me, and if I heard you right, is. It's on the agenda to ratify, the Board of Supervisors has no jurisdiction whatsoever, but to make a motion to pass this, that's what you're saying.
Uh, no, the board could not pass it, but then that would stop the agreement which was reached with the union. Um, so the board has the ability to approve or not approve it. But these terms have been negotiated directly with the union and I just want to make that clear.
Okay, so then why is it even agendized all the title changes? Because what got, what put us here is the board, there was a motion this morning to approve the title changes at a relative to this agreement.
There are two different moving pieces, the first are the negotiated terms that are part of the existing collective bargaining agreement. The second part of, which is related to that, where the classification changes as part of the classification in compensation study. Um, and that those classifications are not in the MOU, we have to bring a separate resolution to make those changes.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, um. You know, uh, I think we came here, we get intentions with um, Supervisor Nevs uh, earlier this morning saying, hey, let's give it a couple hours. I like that, I said that, but what I don't want to do is come here and have it get sloppy and have Shay coming up here and telling us we're doing something wrong and. The unions could file something against us and I think we put ourselves in this position by rushing. The fact is this morning, relative to the title changes, there was not a motion to approve. The um, consent calendar and I don't know why I was on consent, something like that should have been on regular agenda item. That um, that item uh, failed due to a lack of emotion and I think at this time. Uh, myself, I'd feel more comfortable if this just uh, gets put back on for next week. It's not, I don't like being in the position that Shay is stating and and we get in there by rushing it. I don't, I don't like this position right now, I would rather just adjourn and bring it back next week.
So Madam Council, so earlier we had a, no action on the vote. Uh, at this point, am I able to take a, a motion for that to delay this process or not?
Yes, you can take a motion to delay the process to bring it back next week. Um, I do think that it would be wise if the board um, provides some sort of direction. So that we don't just come back for another meeting that's going to look the same as this meeting. But the board can take a motion to um, to have this brought back next week.
Alright, at this time, I'm looking for some direction from, from the board.
Are there, are there more unscheduled appearances?
Uh, Michael Carter here. From uh, SCIU five-two-one, I was uh, one of the lead negotiators um, in the negotiation, uh, Kings County. And I just wanted to go on record to say I didn't, I I felt the questions that were being asked. Um, were totally fine and that I didn't feel you were direct dealing or meddling in union business.
Uh, thank you, thank you, sir.
Any other ones, Kevin?
I do have Ariel Munoz.
Mr. Munoz?
I'm doing, my name is Ariel Munoz, a road maintenance worker. Three or two now. First off, I want to thank you guys for all letting us come here and speak, I know we've been in your guys' hair for a couple months now. Um, I do want to say that, you know, as far as, you know, negotiations. We were, we kept telling, you know, the negotiations, we need a meeting confer about the classifications. At the end of the day, all we want is raises, you know, that's all we're all fighting for, you know? These classifications, that's been working for the last thirty, forty years, my superintendent's been saying this for as many times as he's been getting his ass chewed out, I mean. It's been working and and this hasn't even been more than two weeks and our department right now. It's chaos, like people are feeling belittled, they don't feel like they're earned their road maintenance three as well. I mean. How does it, how does it feel for a guy that's been here thirty years with the class B, you're gonna tell him you can't be a senior because of a class A? You know, he earned that title, be a three a long time ago and he's still here. You know, and for him not to be even considered to be a senior, I mean, to me, a thirty-year guy been here is considered a senior to me. You know, because we all look up to him, but now as far as. As far as the classifications to seniors, it was just put into place by A's, class A's. We don't even have the manpower to be able to have three, four, four more bosses, we don't have, we don't, we don't have Tulare County people, we don't have Fresno County people. We don't have over a hundred players, we're only sixteen people at our department and we do everything. We don't need a boss for this, we don't need a boss for that because me as a three, I am a boss when I go striping by myself. My boss gives me a list and I handle it, I don't need another boss telling me this or that, it's like, I'm a three for a reason, they trust me with this, you know? All I, all I'm saying is. Raises is what everybody wants. Everything is so high right now and I know you guys want to meet for next Tuesday i- if it's retrod or whatever, but it's like. At the end of the day, like I, I, I have. Um, a two will outpass a three if they, if they consider a half percent for a three and that's why we're here in the first place. They wanted to give us half a percent for a three. That's a slap of a face for people that have been here five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. When a guy that's a two that's been here less than a year, that doesn't know any equipment is going to surpass as a three when they max out as a two. That just doesn't make sense. So, I mean. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
I do have one other speaker, Robert Angel.
Hi, Robert.
Definitely bored. Um, just to kind of read it where Ariel said, you know, it's hard to uh, like I'm the maintenance worker four. So I'm like a level below what the supervisor is, that title's taken away from me, right? Because I'm senior maintenance worker, you know, I come to terms with it because at the end of the day, it's like, it seems like. What's gonna happen is gonna happen regardless of whether I want it or not, right? So we tend to accept something because it's put down your throat. At the end of the day, like Ariel was saying, at the end of the day, we want these guys to um. To get money, money is what, is what we all want, not classification change. Like you said, we're only sixteen employees, how are you gonna have other guys think that they're above somebody that's only been here three years? Then above somebody that's been here, like Ariel said, thirty years? And you don't even give him like a um, an opportunity because you look at, well, he's a class B. So that's all that matters, right? Class A's and B's, that's. I don't know how they saw that, like, you know, we got a guy that's been here for six years, got tossed out of the gutter because he's a class B. But knows everything, right? Knows every term, every equipment, knows everything, but he got pushed aside because of that right there. But, like I said, if we were, if the union signed or they did whatever they did, it was because the guys are desperate for money. We never wanted this classification change, but how do you stop something that's being? Every time we, when he first, when we first went into negotiations, we never wanted the classification change, it was like, well, let's get us raises. Well, we'll get you raises, it's classification changes. Well, we thought, well, no, we don't want that at first, so we did it again. They said, no, you're gonna have classification changes, they kept looking at other counties, like Ariel said. We have other people, I know people that work for Fresno County and Tulare County. They have a hundred employees, like, yeah, they need senior maintenance workers because they're not hiring positions, because they have. Like I told somebody, they have a guy that we, that does nothing but striping, nothing but patchy, nothing but equipment operating. We don't do that here, we're just not that big. You know, we're doing chip seal right now, takes over half of our crew. So where's our other people going? You know, we, like Ariel said, you know, it it's so new into this and we got people angry already. We've got people that have been here for a lot of years. That's never trained somebody, right? While a guy that's only been here for three years is training a guy that's been here for eight years because he doesn't have the knowledge. He's never been on equipment because of other circumstances that I won't mention, but. Uh, at the end of the day, he did, he doesn't know what he's doing, he's never operated a piece of equipment and he's put on there, being taught. By a maintenance worker two. Right now, he's a three, but he's gonna get demoted to a two, right? So, all this classification changes just seems like. They're, they're, they're trying to compare us to what though, I don't understand, like, they said, City of Hanford, South City of Hanford. But they only have one senior maintenance worker, we're having three, four, I'm sorry, four. And two supervisors for sixteen employees. You know, I don't. Like I said, I, I, I don't, I, if we accept it, if they accept that the union accept it, it's because of that, our guys are extremely desperate for something. And when they talk about raises, the ones got a good, really good raise. They took out a two title, which we were maxing out at twenty-seven. Uh, twenty-seven, no six, and then now with the raises they gave us, they're gonna max out at. Like twenty-seven sixty or something like that. So they kind of made it seem like they gave us a raise, but at the end of the day, with our classifications as threes, they were gonna get there anyways. They just made it go a little bit faster for these guys, which they were happy with because they're at twenty-something an hour, so. You know, in the low twenties, they're not gonna be putting the mid twenties, sounds good, but at the end of the day, we're still gonna hit the exact same roadblock we're hitting right now. You know? People, you know, mortgage you can't get, you know, rents over two thousand a month, you got guys that only make two thousand a month. That've been there for years, that are making just over two thousand. So, yeah, when they see an opportunity, of course, you know, they, they, they took it because we're like. Well, it seems like they're gonna get their way regardless whether we talk to you guys or whether we um, try to negotiate with them. It just seems like you're getting nowhere because they're so stuck on this study. That doesn't work for our tiny little county, I mean, we're an eighth of a size of what they are. You know, I talked to a guy who works at the road department and, well, in their public works in Fresno, they got over a hundred employees just in that division. I'm not including other, you know, departments. Each, each person has a different assignment, they do different things. I say we don't do that, he does a lot, when I was a senior maintenance worker, three, you worked your way up, you learn different things, you know? We don't have a, or you're just doing painting, that's it, that's your sole job. We don't do that because like I said, when we do chip seal, takes ha- over half of our crew. What leaves us with like four employees. To go patch roads that need to be patched for the next one, so there goes two, three guys, so where do our other guys go? We, we just don't have the manpower to, to accommodate, I think, just the classification changes. The wages were good, I mean, they, they agreed with it because at the end of the day, you know, that you're bumping them up now. But at the end of the day, we're still stuck, we're still in the twenty-seventh, you know, we, we didn't really, we didn't really move up. The ones did, but they were eventually gonna get there as well, you know, with putting in your time and do everything else. But, you know, it's, it's hard to. It's hard to see these guys go through something and, you know, they, they just want it now. Yeah, of course, like I said, of course, we signed and, or they signed, the union. You know, if we, if we can keep the, the pay raises or, or figure out a different way to do it, but keep our classifications, which I haven't heard any department. Like it. They say it's best for the county, but what for what though, I don't understand, like, I know people from different departments and I haven't heard anybody say anything good about the study. You know, you got different department here, other ones out, we're all the same common thing, like. You're comparing, you're trying to compare us to such, such a large county. You know, and these guys do everything as well as, as other large counties because they're a small crew as well. You know, so I hope you guys take that into consideration, you know, just kind of help these guys out and. You know, like, like Duane said, been here for over thirty years, I've been here for ten. I seen it, I worked my way up, we're fine with that, you know, we're all good, it's just our common goal is pay raise. Our system works, it really does. You know, I, I don't know why, you know, they can't see it or anything like that, it's been working. But now all of a sudden this comp study comes and doesn't work. You know, I, I don't know where, I don't know if they took Duane's, think, you know, whatever he says in consideration. But they're, they're stuck with this comp study is the best. But to who? Not for us, not as employees. Without the employees, we're, we're nothing for this county, you know, let, let our guys leave, see how the roads are gonna be. Because they're gonna like it, nobody's gonna like it. You know, we're gonna get a recurrent problem because new guys are gonna leave, they're still gonna leave, you know, right? It's just, it's gonna be a recurrent problem with, with this, if we don't get a raise. Or our senior guys are gonna, are here, gonna go to Fresno because they pay more, Tulare pays more. You know, so just hope you guys could take that. You know, kind of in consideration and you guys do the right thing and. You know, thank you for your time and all I gotta say.
Thank you, thank you. And if anyone else?
Jay has his hand raised online.
Yes, Jay.
I, I just wanted to clarify something and I think there is a lot of a different items that are being brought up. The, regardless of someone in the union is being, uh, their title is being changed downward. No one is losing money as part of this agreement, everyone is seeing an increase. And we specifically negotiated with the union to get to this agreement to make sure that the road workers who do not have a class A license. Will still. Receive an increase commensurate with the other increases that we're seeing. So the wage side of this has been resolved. And um, we worked very purposely with the union to reach an agreement for the entire bargaining unit. That would provide raises and stability going forward. The real concern as I'm hearing it is about the classification series. And the concern from the county is that when we reviewed the classification series. It was, it was not working despite what the employees may think. Because as Carolyn had stated earlier. The higher level classifications had the exact same job duties as the lower level classifications. There were no key distinguishing factors that justified the higher level classification. So we worked with the departments, the county worked with the departments. And we came up with recommendations to address and create a um, classification. Progression that makes sense, so people come in at ones, they move up to twos, they move up, they move up to the next level and there are. Key distinguishing factors that say what the job is differently between those levels. And it's not just about time at the county, it's about the job duties they're performing and about the certifications that they have. And that's what we worked with the union to reach an agreement on. And so it's not a disservice to the employees who have been with the county for a long period of time. Um, we understand that, we've, we've put additional compensation in this, in the, the collective bargaining agreement to address those issues. But this creates a coherent classification progression, which is justifiable beyond just who's been here longest.
Thank you, Jay. Madam Clerk, any others?
I don't believe so.
Can I also say something real quick?
Yes, Karen.
So I just want to point out too that the Coffin Associates recommendation was to delete the three level, but to reclassify all those employees to the two level. It was in working with the department that they um, wanted to do um, at the senior level and add more people to that. And the ones that would qualify for that position would be the ones with a class A license. So that is how we came about, so I want to point out that that's not part of the Coffin Associates recommendation to reclassify upward those individuals. That was part of a department decision that we worked with the department in that. And so again, we are willing and open to um, you know, meeting with the department in six months to reevaluate how the one-two senior classifications are working within the division.
Wait.
I hate to throw Dominic underneath the bus here, but I never was involved in that conversation. Dominic's came to me and asked me about doing the reclassification, every time he talked about it, I said, no, we can't do it. We don't, there. We don't, there. Ariel pointed it out, Robert pointed it out. I pointed it out several times. We are a small group. Yes, all my men, they all intertwine and and work together. Yeah, they all learn all, everything's all the same. Some have more experience than others. Just because you have a Class A. Does not mean that you are more experienced than a three with a Class A. I have. We'll get to it. There are. I have nine twos. And out of those nine twos. I got seven of them with Class A. And yes, they're all less, less years, you know. But most is. Two, two to three years. I have one road maintenance worker one right now and he's working on getting his Class As. He goes, I think it's next week to get it to his driving test. He's done everything else. So as soon as he, is what I usually done is, once they got their Class A, I bumped them up to a two. To get through more pay. But as for the threes that have the Class Bs. There, there are some of the threes that have the Class As that do not have the experience on other pieces of equipment. That's some of the ones with the Bs have. The one A driver, he, yes, he's experienced on the uh, stripper truck. Uh, I got some A drivers that aren't experienced on the the chip machine. We are trying to, everybody, we're trying to intertwine and and train guys to make everybody equal. I agree with the raises. I just disagree with any reclassification of any of my men. Why not just do the re- uh, raise for the threes. At what they're supposed to be getting on this agreement. But don't do the reclassification. It's, it's already causing chaos down at the road yard. It's, and it's gonna get worse. And I feel if you do do the reclassification. And the raises, these guys are gonna be coming. You guys are gonna be getting your ears full. Before the, even the six months is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, again, I I just want to state again that. Yeah, I think we're in a uncomfortable position as far as. Given, even given direction, okay? And and I get it and and I I know we all respect the union process and the bargaining. And so now I'm uncomfortable because of how the direction of this conversation is taking place. So I think that. Um, okay, this morning again. Due to a lack of emotion, the classification item that we put off consent counter failed due to a lack of emotion. I think that um, the safest move is uh, uh, for the board to entertain a journey. Okay, and then the HR director and the union, they got it, they got to figure it out. They gotta go, okay, well, the board didn't pass this. What do we do? Maybe that takes them back to the table. And I know that that causes time and a delay in the salary. But I think clearly we're hearing is that the salary is the carrot, you know, and it's pushing this through. And I'm not comfortable with that. And I, and I don't know why at this point that we're even entertaining it because we made a decision. And now because of that decision. The 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 conversation is happening just is does not feel right to me. And and I know, I don't feel like we can make any decision right now and without. Directing the union, you know, even if we said. Hey, uh, a motion passed today, give them the raise, the increase, but do not change their their um, titles. Then I feel that, okay, now we're doing something outside of what the union. Agreed with, but maybe the union will say now, well, this didn't pass and and now we gotta sit down. And based off of what one of the stewards is listening to this conversation right now, if he's still in honor of what he already heard. Then and what they heard from their fellow union members and maybe that might spark a more specific conversation. But I don't think we're the ones that under pressure right now. I think a decision was made, a clear signal was made this morning and sent. And I think the HR director and her staff just need to go do their jobs and we should just.
So i- i- am I hearing a motion to uh, to adjourn and to give direction to uh, Carolyn to talk to the union?
Well, I don't, I don't want to um, hold up the conversation. That's my input, but we have um, some other members here and and I want to hear them out as well. But that's why I'm.
Any other feedback?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, after listening to everything and I I really appreciate Dwayne's um, input. Um, I think there is a um, process. We went through the process. We do have a, an agreement on the table. Um, I think I would like to move forward on that with the reviews um, within a couple of months. Uh, with an overall review in six months. Um, I think. You know, we can sit here and argue the merits all day long and but until you see it in action and you see it in operation. Um, I just don't want to keep money out of the, out of, out of the staff's pocket. And I think we have a process today that will put money in their pocket today. Uh, but I don't think that this um, discussion is over. Uh, but I think there does need to be further evaluation of these changes. I am old school like Dwayne. Um, I do like the old way that it was done. Um, and I realize we're in a new generation and I have to adjust a little bit and it hurts. I just don't bend like I used to. Uh, but I think it is an opportunity to. Put's, put some money in the, in the hands of staff, but I think we really need to really keep a close eye. On these title changes and their job specifications. Uh, because I feel uncomfortable with that, but I don't think we're gonna resolve it. At the table, I think we're gonna resolve it with these um, on the job studies. And and a, and an evaluation in the field. Jacob, like, and I really appreciate what you did. Your spreadsheet was, I think, extremely knowledgeable. And laid out very, very well.
Thank you. And um, I just wanted to uh, bring up one point that Carolyn did mention about our job description being compared to. Uh, what Coffin Associates did do. As we are senior building maintenance workers, it is our job as also leads, we work individual. It is our job to do stuff by ourselves. Each one of us go on call each week. Where we can get called at midnight, one, two, three, four, whatever time. And it is by ourselves that we have to fix whatever is going on. So that is something that. I wanted to make sure is iterated that we do not hold a lead position because we are all leads, because we have to work by ourselves. Thank you.
And and Jacob, you want to talk about that because that could be plumbing, could be electric.
Yeah, plumbing, electrical welding, um, sewer.
Carpentry.
Carpentry.
Yeah.
Locks.
And I think.
Jail locks, everything.
Yeah, and that's the part I think that was lost in my mind in in your division. And and where I have a hard time with lead workers, just like you say, you you have a staff that has multiple skills. That's not necessarily true in other um, counties, other jurisdictions.
Correct. County of Fresno is all individual.
Correct. And so, and I think that was the big thing. Um, and I would really appreciate if we could. Get this agreement signed and then continue to work with human resources. And work on that job spec a little bit tighter. Uh, because again, I don't think they understand your skill set across multiple. Um, industries, carpentry, electrical, plumbing and carpentry, so.
And just to make it clear, we're not here to dispute the contract or anything like that. I'm just here to bring, you know. Information to the board about the errors that were in the Coffin Associates.
And I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With uh, Mr. Chairman, supervisor Valley.
I just wanted to bounce this around. So um, seeing as the uh, where I agree with you on, yeah. We obviously, we want to get, get them their money today, but if we look at it from the opposite end where. When we were uh, uh, early in the discussion, when Shay jumped in and said, hey, look, now you're messing with this union. Agreement, right? Um, when we were, when we were going down a different line, but if, if we go down your approach. Um, how is that okay, right, for us to um. Put something extra on the agreement by saying in six months this will be reviewed if that wasn't part of the ratification.
Yeah, and that's not, that's not part of the union part of it. That's um, a request of uh, human resource staff. To be able to evaluate those changes. I think sometimes in government, we just don't look back far enough. Um, I think sometimes we make changes and then just. I think at some point you have to stop and look back and see what the, how those changes affected um, operations.
So.
I I I see this one being a positive as far as wages. I see it. I, the jury's still out on whether the lead worker, senior worker, two, three, whatever classification you want to call it. Um, I think that part of it still needs about further evaluation. And I'd rather see him work in the field and work through that, not at the table.
Okay, uh, and I want to get there with you, but I want to make sure that when we make the motion. That HR sees this, the spirit of it today, right? If it passes today, that this isn't the board saying. We one hundred percent agree with this. We're, with the spirit of it is, pass it, pay the people. Right, but then we're gonna give a different direction to HR. I'm gonna wait for Carolyn to come back because I don't want her to miss this part.
Sorry, I was letting him know that Michael's saying he's trying to get in, but he's in the waiting room. And he's, so, sorry.
But I want, I want you to understand that, at least with my vote, and I think what, what we're trying to say here. Is that the spirit of it is um, to go back and and in six months, right? To come back to say whether this is working or not. Clearly, the employee is already saying this is not gonna work. I wish we did it the other way around. Pass it and uh, monitor it in six months and in six months. Them keeping their same titles don't work, then come back for a change of it. But okay, the agreement is what it is, but what I don't want is for you to come back and say, oh, it's so much um. Money, it's very expensive to go back and change their titles, or it's gonna cost a lot of money to go back. And um, and reverse it to the original titles. So if you see any obstacles in that, I want to know that right now before I vote.
I do think there could potentially be, go ahead.
Supervisor Valley, I do want to note that, you know, this is, this issue comes up. And it it actually happened, you know, I'll use an example for district attorney. Um, she came in as, you know, a new elected official. She had some issues. Um, the way it was set up in her office with her classifications, you know, it was set up that way, but she felt, didn't feel like it was working. So she came to us, we worked with it, we did some classification changes and we did it mid-year. We didn't even have to wait to budget, you know? But that is working with the department head, them telling us, hey, these are the issues. So I talked to Wayne, you know, earlier today and I said, hey, like, you know, even though you're gonna be gone, you know, whoever you, you talk to or your staff, let them know that. If this isn't working, they need to be communicating that, you know, to their supervisors. So then these are classification issues that we can address internally. And we do it all the time. We're gonna be facing some other, other classifications in the fiscal series, you know, coming up. And we know that there's gonna be, we're gonna have to do a second look on them, you know, and that's just, this is another one that we're gonna have to do a second look, so it's.
But I'm, I think I'm hearing two different answers where the HR director said it's gonna create challenges. And you're telling the board, hey, no, 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 we could do this. So, you know, this is, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing this for others. So again.
Can I clarify though, what I mean? So I I just want to, because you were mentioning that, you know, if, you know, let's say they they say undo what we did. And we have four seniors and we say, you know what, we want to go back to one. Then obviously there's gonna be three people that are gonna be in classifications that we're not recommending. So it could potentially create some organizational structure change. But we would work through it and we would meet and confer on it because we still have, even though this contract, this sign letter that we are amending and extending on. Today, um, the direction from you would be a direction to me to re- um, evaluate and look at this. And then to meet and confer on any uh, recommendations that the department has. So I would have to be back at the table with them. So. It doesn't, it gives me direction, but my direction still has to include that meeting and fair process, but at least moves forward with the recommendation. To give the salaries to the employees as negotiated. And I just want to point out that Michael said he's still having trouble getting in.
Um, counsel, can, do you mind cleaning this up a little bit? Because honestly, and I'm, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I don't even know what part of the agenda we're on. There was an agenda item that failed due to a lack of emotion, which was a classification. And then there was the item to uh, ratify the agreement, but we were told we can't even take that up. Until the board takes up the, the classification issue that it didn't pass, so it holds up the agreement. So. Now I'm confused. What, which item did we open up with? And I want, and and again, I'm, I'm still not comfortable here today.
I can tell you how I understand it. I I understand it as there was a reclassification agenda item. That did not pass. That had an effect on the compensation portion. Um, which was a separate agenda item. Um, and so both of them, neither one of them have passed. Um, and I will seek clarification from Carolyn and Kiria. If the way that the compensation portion is structured is contingent on the classification changes. That's why you can't do one without the other, because if you don't do the classification changes as recommended. Then the compensation piece of it is, probably has references that are not gonna make any sense. Would that be accurate, Carolyn?
That's correct.
Okay, so which agenda item are we on right now?
We're on C two, or C one, sorry.
One, yeah. She, supervisor, she did add a modification though to that motion, to reevaluate in six months.
Right. Okay, monthly input. Dwayne won't have anything to do next year, so he can do it.
If, brief, briefly.
My question is, why was the, so when you guys did your comp study, why was it? The guys have been there longer but don't have a Class A, why weren't they given an opportunity to say, hey, you guys have been here for so long? You guys have to know your guys' stuff. So why weren't they given an opportunity to become a senior and then have a year to get your license at Class A? So why, why weren't, so you guys go off a compensate, but why weren't we asked like, hey, you know, because I'm a Class B driver and. You know, I, I'm a C, I'm a maintenance worker four. I got all skills in the world, so you guys could have passed on me and just said, ah, you're not, you have a Class A, a B, so. You don't qualify. So why was, why weren't you guys look at the years instead of? You know, like I said, I got a guy's been there five, six years, Class B. Knows everything, everything. Got a guy's been there for three years. He has a Class A, so he's gonna be now potentially in your guys' eyes, a senior maintenance worker. So he's gonna surpass the guy that's been there for thirty and the guy's been there for six, seven years. So that's what I don't understand. That's what's making a lot of people upset as well, is now the guy that's been there for such a short amount of time gets to bump up. I mean dramatically. So why weren't the guys that's been there longer, why weren't they even considered? Yeah, I'm grandfathered into because I'm, you know, I get to be a senior maintenance worker, you know, because of me being the four. But, you know, I get my truck taken away that I earned. I get, I mentioned it like two, three weeks ago, but anyways, yeah, that's. I come to terms with it, but at the end of the day, kind of like you hear from other people that are upset. Like the guy's been there for twenty, thirty years, whatever. It's, it's just not right, but I don't know why. Why was that? Just because Class A?
So the Class A um, license was um, brought up as an issue by the union several years ago. Um, the A license is a little bit harder to get than the B. It requires more testing. Um, and so some, because the job specs are written right now currently, that they can either come in or they can get the A or B license. Many have chosen to get the B, uh, but there are some that still um, get the A. The A's license is required to do every facet of the job. So it was determined by the department um, in the class and pay um, that the senior level would have the Class A license. So when we were looking at the reclassification downward, that was recommended by uh, Coffin Associates, again, they recommended every single. Three level to be rec- um, downward reclassified to a two. What we did was the department asked us to look at it from a different perspective and see if there was any that could reclassify upward if they qualified for the position. And that's with those that had the Class A, and that's how that was established. And that's with those that had the class A, and that's how that was established.
We only have two semis, by the way. They're class As. Yeah. And then, different trailer, two trailers are class As, three. You know? So we don't utilize them a lot, so we have a lot of class B vehicles, dump trucks, water trucks. Stripper. Just a lot of classy vehicles, hatch trucks, everything, I mean, it's just. I don't know, I, I just feel bad for the guys that've been there for so long that they just got overlooked, because a guy's been there for three years, that just became a three. So they saw that and said, oh, wow, he qualifies, so make him a senior maintenance worker.
And Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, can I ask some quick question? A sir, um, sorry, I, I didn't get your last name, but.
Robert.
Robert.
Robert, Angel's last name.
Um, good afternoon, um, what are your general thoughts on, on what's being entertained right now, just to pass it? Get the money, and in six months, um. Get a review on, on how this, uh, classification changes work, um, I'm interested in that.
I mean, I'm all, I mean, like Joe Neff said, I'm, I'm all for my guy, our guys getting pay raises. At, at, at the end of the day, it's a good thing for the pay raise. I, I don't know how we can go to them and ask them, or something's not going right, like, I guess that's a, they, something they have to maybe ask us a little bit more, like. Make us a part of what's, what's going on with it, not just kinda oversee us, like, we kinda always get overseen, you know?
That's a good point, cuz you can't just call.
Uh, yeah.
That goes through the union, right?
Yeah, so, I mean.
And we're back to square one.
Yeah, back to square one, I mean, that's just something, if they can talk to our department, that, that's the thing, is they have to go to department, department, cuz every department's different. I, our departments are comparable to building maintenance, like, you know? It's just, I, I, I don't know how we can do that, or how we can go about.
Carolyn, do you have a response to that?
Um, I'm sorry, Jose Segala is asking to speak, and I don't see him up there, so, um. Oh, he's.
Okay, but can you respond to that?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Well, what, what he was saying with the, um, to, for you, how, how do we get you guys involved if this passes?
So the department head, um, would reach out to me, or the superintendent who gets, um, promoted into the vacancy, and we would, um, meet to talk about what the challenges are, what you have, and we would, um, evaluate the positions at that time. It'd probably be more of a, um, a different type of perspective. Last time with the Coffin Associates, it was done by paper. This one would most likely require us to actually go out in the field with you guys.
Yeah, that'd be.
Okay, thank you, and before we move on to Jose, Madam Counsel. Hang on one sec, Jose, we'll get right to you.
My thought was to remind the board the same thing that Shay reminded the board of before, that, um, you know, we, we work with the employees through the unions and to directly bargain with the employees, um, would be a violation of the law. So I just wanted to remind the board of that and to encourage the board.
When did we do that?
I, I believe that, um, that we are, I, I don't wanna make statements of what I, of my opinion of what's going on here today, um, on the record.
Let me ask you, do you think that I did something?
I think that there have, um, I think that there has been questionable, um, um, negotiations today.
I'm out, cuz like I said earlier, I didn't wanna be put in this position, so I'm just kidding.
And my intent was just to remind the board.
I'm sorry, Jose, you're online, go ahead.
Yes, Supervisor, good afternoon, my name's Jose Segala, and I work at SCIU, and I was, uh, part of the negotiation team. And, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to chime in on a few things, uh, Michael Carter, uh, coordinator, I was not able to get back on, but I wanted to, uh, basically say that, yes, you know, we did, um, have an agreement and our board voted on it, and some of the speakers were correct in terms of us having initially opposing the consolidation from day one. Unfortunately, the department was kind of both ways, some were for it, some were against it. Um, our members did see that a way to get a decent wage increase was to accept the consolidation. Uh, as you know, there's been a lot of concerns about the study. Uh, I think, uh, uh, you know, the direction the supervisors are trying to provide, the staff, uh, would be open to it in regards to looking at the classifications specifically for the road yards, and then perhaps down the road, looking at the, uh, building maintenance workers issues that, uh, Jacob has brought up. Um, and we just wanna make sure that, uh, whatever happens moving forward, there is a, a request to have the, the, uh, increases effective September 2nd, and then also, uh, if, if the board wants to provide direction to staff to leave things as is in terms of the road yard classifications, uh, we would definitely are open to that. However, uh, you know, the wages would have to remain the same. I mean, we worked hard to negotiate where we're at, and so I just wanted to put that out there. I know you guys are still trying to figure out where to go from here, um, and obviously it'll be up to your board. But, uh, we definitely wanna make sure whatever option you have, wages remain in place. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Madam Clerk, anyone else? Madam Deputy Clerk.
Nobody else.
Yes. All right, uh, any comments from Supervisors? No? Uh, yes?
Yeah, no, Mr. Chair, I, I, I just wanna go ahead and move forward then and approve the, um, unfor- unfortunately, um, the, uh, all of the job specification changes for the public works department. Um, and then we'll have to take up the, um, uh, side letter agreement under a different, we don't, we can't do those at the same time, Diane? Or can we?
We have, we haven't presented it yet.
You have to do both?
No, we haven't presented it yet.
I know, so. Yeah, so that, that's what, that's my motion is today, as amended by, uh, Carolyn as far as, uh, the evaluations.
All right, so I have a motion made, do we have a second?
Yes, yes.
Supervisor Fagundes, okay, Madam Clerk, Madam Deputy Clerk, will call?
Joe Neffs.
Yes.
Richard Valley stepped away. Deanna Verbun is absent, Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
And Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay. Separate side letter, Carolyn?
Yes, I'm gonna hand it over to Danielle. She's worked hard on it, so she should've, uh, presented.
Hi, good afternoon, Vice Chair and members of the board, Danielle Leep, Personnel Analyst with Human Resources. I'm here today to recommend that the board authorize the Human Resource Director to sign the side letter of agreement with the blue collar membership for an extension to the current memorandum of understanding, MOU, which was approved with terms beginning November 1st, 2021 through October 31st, 2025. The fourth year of that agreement included a reopener language, and with this side letter, the term of the MOU has been extended through June 30th, 2026. The modifications to the MOU provide for salaries to be updated in accordance with the salary recommendations from the Coffin Associates Classification and Compensation Study. And the salary recommend, uh, recommendations vary based on classification. In addition to the recommended salaries, all classifications covered by this agreement will, will receive an additional 2%, which will be effective September 2nd, 2024. Also, in the fourth year of the agreement, road maintenance worker three positions that are being reclassified to the road maintenance worker twos and are currently below a step five will receive an additional step advancement of approximately 5%. Additionally, in the fourth year of the agreement, effective pay period 26, 2024, which is December 9th, 2024, employees and classifications covered by this agreement shall receive a 2.0 range, approximately 2% salary increase. In the extended fifth year of this agreement, effective pay period 15 of 2025, which is July 7th, 2025, employees covered by this agreement shall receive a 1.0 range, approximately 1% increase. In addition to regular salaries, excuse me, employees who have completed 10 years of continuous, full-time service with the county will receive longevity pay in the amount of 3% in addition to their regular salaries. County contributions for health insurance premiums were updated to reflect the new rates that went into effect on July 1st, 2024. During the term agreement, any increases in health insurance premium amounts will continue to be shared equally between the employee and the employer, having an equal percentage applied to their shares. Other benefits were added to this agreement. The holiday closure for 2024 was updated to include three additional days for a total of 52 hours of paid closure time. And for 2025, the closure was added with an additional day, so that would be a total of 36 hours of paid closure for 2025. A four-to-one match for deferred compensation was also added for a maximum of up to 500 per year. The annual uniform allowance was increased from 100 to $125 for road maintenance workers one, two, and senior road maintenance workers, and from $221 to $246 for all other employees that are required to wear and maintain a uniform covered by this agreement. Additionally, effective July 1st, 2024, employees in the roads and fleet divisions will be allotted a reimbursement of up to $150 per fiscal year for a work boot of their choice that satisfies the footwear requirements established by the department and or division. Additionally, updates were made to incorporate all modifications previously agreed to, including the added half-day holiday for Christmas Eve, as well as minor updates and other negotiated non-economic changes. The fiscal impact will be approximately $466,000, or two, and $254, excuse me, for the remainder of the fiscal year. Costs associated with the deferred comp match will vary based on participation of the membership, and ongoing costs beyond the current fiscal year will be absorbed by the department through the budget process. I recommend that the board authorize the Human Resources Director to sign the side letter of agreement with the blue collar membership, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Very good, thank you, Danielle, any questions for Danielle? Okay, do I have a motion? Supervisor Fagundes, Supervisor Neff, with a second. Madam Clerk, fill the role.
Joe Neffs.
Yes.
Richard Valley has stepped away. Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you, and I wanna thank the association as well.
Thank you very much. Okay.
At this time, I believe we've concluded all business for the day, so we, uh, stand adjourned.
At 3:11, thank you.